I'd ask the fire department honor guard to approach and post the colors.
Honor guard, attend. Stand. Head to period. Read. Forward. March.
I don't think so. You're supposed to stand up. Please rise and we'll be doing the pledge of allegiance after the colors are posted.
Prepare post colors. Present. Arms.
This evening, I have Brian Scherer, leader of Elmhurst Cub Scout Pack 23 here. They're based out of Epiphany Church, the corner of Spring and Valette. And the Cub Scout Pack is a group of boys, mostly in fourth grade, some between, actually between first and fifth grades. They're attending the city council meeting tonight. And I've asked them to come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Pack 23, please come forward, right behind the firefighters there. Engage in your salute, and when you're ready, lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pack 23.
Order. Arms. Ready. Please.
And please be seated. Clerk Tamer, would you please call the roll?
Deuter.
Here.
Veremis. Absent. Hill.
Here.
Shenko.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Pluto.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Nudera.
Here.
Bastido.
Here.
Nardini.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Erby.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. Moving on to item three on the agenda, we have some presentations tonight. I'm very pleased, as you'll see with these presentations, we, you know, actually, yes, we are going to be doing, swearing a couple new firefighters and doing some promotions. I feel we, as a city council, have worked very hard to rebuild our fire department relations, and we're just about there. I think we're about one short. So this is a good night for everyone, and the people who are being promoted are of the highest caliber, and we're proud and pleased to have them being promoted tonight. So I'm going to start with the newer firefighters first, and I'll call you up, but let me step over to the side. Do we have a microphone? Thank you. All right. The first swearing in is for Simon Wind, who I haven't met yet, so there you are. Hello, Simon.
Nice to meet you.
Do you have any family with you tonight?
Quite a bit, yes.
Well, bring them all up here. Bring them all, everybody, every, it doesn't matter, we'll take three rows. This is probably the... Looks like you've been in the business floor.
I have been.
All right. Come on back around here. Actually, we're going to stand here because I'm going to administer the oath.
Okay.
Come on up. I think this is bigger than our fire department. Well, all right. So Simon, why don't you, I'm going to hand you the microphone and let you introduce some people.
Sure. Well, we have 20 minutes here, so this is my father, Tom Wind, lieutenant at Elk Grove Fire Department. This is my mother, Kirsten Wind. This is my brother Nolan, sister Georgia, sister Adeline, sister Charlotte. I don't want to miss anybody. This is my girlfriend Autumn, her parents behind her, my aunt Michelle, and then my mother's parents, grandparents, over there.
Well, welcome, everyone. One second here. Is our chief here? Give me one second here. Oh, I love those tricks. All right. All right, because that's kind of part of the ceremony. All right, so you've met the extended family. Simon has an associate's degree in arts from Harper College. He's coached youth hockey for five years, Northwest Chargers. We're, of course, the chiefs here in town, but don't worry about that. And you've already met his father, Tom, who's in the service in Elk Grove Village. So you're ready to proceed?
I am.
All right. Do you raise your right hand?
Aye, Simon Wind. Aye, Simon Wind.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst.
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of firefighter.
Of firefighter.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
You are a firefighter.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask the family to step behind father and son here. We're going to take a group picture all together, and I will step out, and then someday you'll say, "Who was that guy?" Yeah. Step forward a little bit in front of the flag so we can get everyone in.
Well, you know, we traveled.
Hey, Nick. That's all right. All right, Nick, you want to tell us who's with you tonight?
Okay. This is my mother, Tracy. This is my girlfriend Angela and her mother, Paulette.
And that's it. That's enough. That's enough. You want to come up again for him and... So Nick lives in Payless Hills. You've met his mom. He's got a bachelor's degree in athletic training from Illinois State University, and first in the family to be in the fire service. You were EMT for two years, right? Very, very good. Welcome. All right. Ready to proceed?
Aye, Nick Holbrook.
Aye, Nick Holbrook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And will discharge the duties.
Of firefighter.
Of firefighter.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
You are a firefighter.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask the family to step behind father and son here. We're going to take a group picture all together, and I will step out, and then someday you'll say, "Who was that guy?" Yeah. Step forward a little bit in front of the flag so we can get everyone in. We have another new firefighter, Nick Holbrook.
Well, you know, we traveled.
Hey, Nick. That's all right. All right, Nick, you want to tell us who's with you tonight?
Okay. This is my mother, Tracy. This is my girlfriend Angela and her mother, Paulette. And that's it.
That's enough. That's enough. You want to come up again for him and... So Nick lives in Payless Hills. You've met his mom. He's got a bachelor's degree in athletic training from Illinois State University, and first in the family to be in the fire service. You were EMT for two years, right? Very, very good. Welcome. All right. Ready to proceed?
Aye, Nick Holbrook.
Aye, Nick Holbrook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the chartered laws.
And the chartered laws.
Of the City of Elmhurst.
Of the City of Elmhurst.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And will discharge the duties.
Of firefighter.
Fighter, fighter.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Well, we're going to start at the top because I think we have to make room, so Steve Reynolds. Well, for our city council members and many of you in the audience, Steve is not a new person to us. He started with the fire department in 2000. Actually, let me introduce, have you introduced? I was going to do it, but you know them better than I do.
This is my wife, Sam, my daughter, Mac, my son, Owen, my daughter, Livy, my mom, Debbie, my dad, Mark, my mother-in-law, Sharon, my father-in-law, Tom, my cousin, Robbie.
All right. Steve has an associate's degree in fire science from Southern Illinois University. He's the head of our public education division, served three years in the U.S. Navy. We thank you in advance of Veterans Day. He was promoted to lieutenant in 2014, and he became battalion chief in 2023. Hope this won't be like old news for you, but all right. All right, you ready?
Aye, Steve Reynolds.
Aye, Steve Reynolds.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst.
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst.
And that I will fulfill the obligations of deputy chief.
And I will fulfill the obligations of deputy chief.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
We got some paramedics here. Don't worry if he falls. Want to bring your family up there? Just face me, come over here. Back up a little, just one, two steps. That's good. You're good. We're good. Trying to rhyme and rival Simon here, but I don't know if you quite made it.
You got more family?
All right. Welcome, Bill. You want to tell us who's joining you tonight?
Yes. I have my parents, Bill and Debbie, my wife, Amy, my son, Braden, my stepson, Nick, his wife, Lauren, my future granddaughter, stepdaughter, Kayla, my older sister, Holly, her boyfriend, Ted, and niece, Abby.
All right. Well, Bill started also in 2000 with the fire department. He's a member of the, was a member of the McHenry Fire Department for 20 years as a captain. He has an associate's degree in fire science from McHenry County College, achieved the certification of fire officer, too, and he's an incident safety officer and a member of our foreign fire insurance board. We are promoting Bill tonight to battalion chief. I feel like we already did this because we had an informal ceremony at the fire department. It was practice, and he did pretty good, I got to say, so. Stand over here and face me. All right. All right. Aye, Bill Effling.
Aye, Bill Effling.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst.
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst.
And that I will fulfill the obligations of deputy chief.
And I will fulfill the obligations of deputy chief.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
All right. Andrew Scarlett. All right. Andrew started with the fire department in 2003, previously worked for the St. Charles Fire Department for four years. We're about to meet some of the family. He's a member of the fire insurance board as well, been a member of our honor guard for five years, but didn't get to participate tonight for obvious reasons, and a member of our hazmat team and our technical rescue team, so a lot of qualifications. Andrew, you want to introduce your guest tonight?
Sure. This is my son, Casey. This is my father, Bob, my mother, Mary, and my brother, Todd.
All right, you ready? All right, slide over a little bit this way.
Aye, Andrew Scarlett.
Aye, Andrew Scarlett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst.
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of fire lieutenant.
Of fire lieutenant.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
All right. Andrew Scarlett. All right. Andrew started with the fire department in 2003, previously worked for the St. Charles Fire Department for four years. We're about to meet some of the family. He's a member of the fire insurance board as well, been a member of our honor guard for five years, but didn't get to participate tonight for obvious reasons, and a member of our hazmat team and our technical rescue team, so a lot of qualifications. Andrew, you want to introduce your guest tonight?
Sure. This is my son, Casey. This is my father, Bob, my mother, Mary, and my brother, Todd.
All right, you ready? All right, slide over a little bit this way.
Aye, Andrew Scarlett.
Aye, Andrew Scarlett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst.
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of fire lieutenant.
Of fire lieutenant.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Steve. Congratulations.
Come on up.
Congratulations.
We got some paramedics here. Don't worry if he falls. Want to bring your family up there? Just face me, come over here. Back up a little, just one, two steps. That's good. You're good. We're good. Trying to stand in front of them. Trying to rhyme and rival Simon here, but I don't know if you quite made it.
You got more family?
All right. Welcome, Bill. You want to tell us who's joining you tonight?
Yes. I have my parents, Bill and Debbie, my wife, Amy, my son, Braden, my stepson, Nick, his wife, Lauren, my future granddaughter, stepdaughter, Kayla, my older sister, Holly, her boyfriend, Ted, and niece, Abby.
All right. Well, Bill started also in 2000 with the fire department. He's a member of the, was a member of the McHenry Fire Department for 20 years as a captain. He has an associate's degree in fire science from McHenry County College, achieved the certification of fire officer, too, and he's an incident safety officer and a member of our foreign fire insurance board. We are promoting Bill tonight to battalion chief. I feel like we already did this because we had an informal ceremony at the fire department.
It was practice.
It was practice, and he did pretty good, I got to say, so. Stand over here and face me. All right. Aye, Bill Effling.
Aye, Bill Effling.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst.
The chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of battalion chief.
Of battalion chief.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Bill.
We're going to take the picture this way for ease of logistics. All right. Andrew Scarlett. All right. Andrew started with the fire department in 2003, previously worked for the St. Charles Fire Department for four years. We're about to meet some of the family. He's a member of the fire insurance board as well, been a member of our honor guard for five years, but didn't get to participate tonight for obvious reasons, and a member of our hazmat team and our technical rescue team, so a lot of qualifications. Andrew, you want to introduce your guest tonight?
Sure. This is my son, Casey. This is my father, Bob, my mother, Mary, and my brother, Todd.
All right, you ready? All right, slide over a little bit this way.
Aye, Andrew Scarlett.
Aye, Andrew Scarlett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst.
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of fire lieutenant.
Of fire lieutenant.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
All right. Andrew Scarlett. All right. Andrew started with the fire department in 2003, previously worked for the St. Charles Fire Department for four years. We're about to meet some of the family. He's a member of the fire insurance board as well, been a member of our honor guard for five years, but didn't get to participate tonight for obvious reasons, and a member of our hazmat team and our technical rescue team, so a lot of qualifications. Andrew, you want to introduce your guest tonight?
Sure. This is my son, Casey. This is my father, Bob, my mother, Mary, and my brother, Todd.
All right, you ready? All right, slide over a little bit this way.
Aye, Andrew Scarlett.
Aye, Andrew Scarlett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst.
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of fire lieutenant.
Of fire lieutenant.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
All right. Andrew Scarlett. All right. Andrew started with the fire department in 2003, previously worked for the St. Charles Fire Department for four years. We're about to meet some of the family. He's a member of the fire insurance board as well, been a member of our honor guard for five years, but didn't get to participate tonight for obvious reasons, and a member of our hazmat team and our technical rescue team, so a lot of qualifications. Andrew, you want to introduce your guest tonight?
Sure. This is my son, Casey. This is my father, Bob, my mother, Mary, and my brother, Todd.
All right, you ready? All right, slide over a little bit this way.
Aye, Andrew Scarlett.
Aye, Andrew Scarlett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst.
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of fire lieutenant.
Of fire lieutenant.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Awesome. Congratulations. 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 Present. Arms. Word. Arms. Ready to retreat, fellas? Read. All right. I know the firefighters don't want to go out and celebrate. You want to stay here for the rest of the meeting, but we don't have enough seats. So if you want to stay, you're, of course, welcome. If you want to adjourn to celebratory events, you may take your leave now. We'll take a one-minute recess for that purpose. I know the firefighters don't want to go out and celebrate. You want to stay here for the rest of the meeting, but we don't have enough seats. So if you want to stay, you're, of course, welcome. If you want to adjourn to celebratory events, you may take your leave now. We'll take a one-minute recess for that purpose. I know the firefighters don't want to go out and celebrate. You want to stay here for the rest of the meeting, but we don't have enough seats. So if you want to stay, you're, of course, welcome. If you want to adjourn to celebratory events, you may take your leave now. We'll take a one-minute recess for that purpose. I know the firefighters don't want to go out and celebrate. You want to stay here for the rest of the meeting, but we don't have enough seats. So if you want to stay, you're, of course, welcome. If you want to adjourn to celebratory events, you may take your leave now. We'll take a one-minute recess for that purpose. I know the firefighters don't want to go out and celebrate. You want to stay here for the rest of the meeting, but we don't have enough seats. So if you want to stay, you're, of course, welcome. If you want to adjourn to celebratory events, you may take your leave now. We'll take a one-minute recess for that purpose. I know the firefighters don't want to go out and celebrate. You want to stay here for the rest of the meeting, but we don't have enough seats. So if you want to stay, you're, of course, welcome. If you want to adjourn to celebratory events, you may take your leave now. We'll take a one-minute recess for that purpose. I know the firefighters don't want to go out and celebrate. You want to stay here for the rest of the meeting, but we don't have enough seats. So if you want to stay, you're, of course, welcome. If you want to adjourn to celebratory events, you may take your leave now. We'll take a one-minute recess for that purpose. I know the firefighters don't want to go out and celebrate. You want to stay here for the rest of the meeting, but we don't have enough seats. So if you want to stay, you're, of course, welcome. If you want to adjourn to celebratory events, you may take your leave now. We'll take a one-minute recess for that purpose. I know the firefighters don't want to go out and celebrate. You want to stay here for the rest of the meeting, but we don't have enough seats. So if you want to stay, you're, of course, welcome. If you want to adjourn to celebratory events, you may take your leave now. We'll take a one-minute recess for that purpose. I know the firefighters don't want to go out and celebrate. You want to stay here for the rest of the meeting, but we don't have enough seats. So if you want to stay, you're, of course, welcome. If you want to adjourn to celebratory events, you may take your leave now. We'll take a one-minute recess for that purpose. I know the firefighters don't want to go out and celebrate. You want to stay here for the rest of the meeting, but we don't have enough seats. So if you want to stay, you're, of course, welcome. If you want to adjourn to celebratory events, you may take your leave now. We'll take a one-minute recess for that purpose. I know the firefighters don't want to go out and celebrate. You want to stay here for the rest of the meeting, but we don't have enough seats. So if you want to stay, you're, of course, welcome. If you want to adjourn to celebratory events, you may take your leave now. We'll take a one-minute recess for that purpose. I know the firefighters don't want to go out and celebrate. You want to stay here for the rest of the meeting, but we don't have enough seats. All right. Mr. Cassidy, if you would step up to that microphone right in front of you there. State your name and your address is optional, and you have three minutes.
I won't take three minutes, only a couple of seconds. I wanted to say thank you to everyone involved, and I know you have a lot of competition for the dollars that it takes to fund a fire department. I'm speaking as a resident of Elmhurst. I was born here and still live here and raised my kids here. But the command staff to me is something that I think is, kind of goes under the radar because there hasn't been a major incident luckily, partly thanks to their work. But I just wanted to say thank you and support your decision to staff all these command spots.
And Mr. Cassidy's not just dressed up as a firefighter. Really is one. It's not the Halloween stuff. So thank you, Mr. Cassidy, for your comments.
I understand. A lot of competition for those dollars, and your jobs are difficult. There's winners and losers of every decision you make, I know. So I'm just very grateful. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak a couple, public comment that didn't get an opportunity to sign in? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item five, six announcements. Are there any announcements from the dais? Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Veremis and I are hosting a town hall meeting for the first ward on Thursday, November 16th. It will be here at City Hall from 7:00 to 8:30, and we'll be meeting in the second-floor conference room, right at the top of the steps. So all are welcome to attend.
All right. Any other announcements? Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remind the community that the Elmhurst American Legion will be holding a military benefit this Saturday, November 11th, Veterans Day, starting at 6 o'clock at the American Legion. This is Stories Behind the Songs, and these are songs performed by the original songwriters of those songs. It's become an annual event at the Legion, and tickets can still be purchased at the door, so we hope to see you out there.
Very fine event. Can't make it this year, but I've gone in years past. Alderman Nardini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a slightly less positive tone. On Saturday, there were some anti-Semitic flyers that were, that turned up around Elmhurst in the morning, and by 3:00 PM, Chief McLean had released a statement denouncing them. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank Chief for doing that as quickly as he did. They turned up in the first, fifth, and sixth ward, and also, I believe, in La Grange Park. And I mention La Grange Park because it's relieving to know that it's not Elmhurst-specific, and I'm hopeful that the perpetrator isn't local. They were placed in plastic bags weighted down with pebbles so that they could be thrown out of car windows for easy dissemination. And I'd like to speak to neighbors. If anybody saw these on your driveways, take a look at your home surveillance camera footage. Maybe you see a person or make and model of a car, or maybe a license plate number. And if you don't have that equipment, maybe talk to the neighbor to the left of you or the neighbor to the right of you and see if they have that. The best end of this story is that some neighbors get to meet one another discussing ring, doorbell footage, and Chief McLean gets to meet some local bigot and discuss littering ordinances in the city of Elmhurst. This is the worst of us. The chief can be reached at 630-530-3050, or you can email detectives@elmhurst.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Nardini, any other announcements? All right. Very good. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Tamer, please read the consent agenda.
7.1 minutes of the executive session meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on September 18th, 2023. 7.2 minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on October 2nd, 2023. 7.3 minutes of the executive session of the Elmhurst City Council on October 10th, 2023. 7.4 minutes of the special meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on October 10th, 2023. 7.5 minutes of the special meeting, joint meeting of the Elmhurst City Council, Committee of the Whole, and Zoning and Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, minutes on October 10th, 2023. 7.6 minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on October 16th, 2023. 7.7 accounts payable November 6th, 2023. 7.8 approval of 2024 meeting schedule. 7.9 report case 23PO4, Elmhurst University Health Sciences Building, final planned unit development. 7.10 report First Responders Memorial. 7.11 report Engineering Resource Associates, on-call engineering services. 7.12 report 2024 GIS Consortium Service Provider Contract. 7.13 report 2023 Storm Sewer Linings Project Change Order Number Two, Illinois Route 83 Sinkhole Repair. See item 9.1. 7.4 an ordinance granting a conditional use permit and associated variations for the property commonly known as 505 West Grand Avenue, Elmhurst, Illinois. 7.5 an ordinance amending section 51.53 entitled Possession of Cannabis Prohibited of Chapter 51 entitled Offenses Against Public Peace, Safety and Morals of the Municipal Code of Ordinances of the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. 7.6 an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive license agreement by and between the Spring Road Business Association and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, Ann Cook Counties, Illinois. 7.17 an ordinance excluding the City of Elmhurst as a municipal employer from coverage under the Paid Leave for All Workers Act and amending the city code to require a form of paid leave for city employees. 7.18 a resolution approving a fourth extended memorandum of understanding between the City of Elmhurst and Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council on behalf of the Elmhurst Police Officers, Illinois FOP Lodge Number 81. 7.19 a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a professional engineering services agreement by and between Clark Deets, Inc. and the City of Elmhurst for the Water System Improvements Project. 7.20 a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the purchase of body cameras, in-car cameras, and interview room cameras for the City of Elmhurst Police Department. 7.21 a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to the Professional Auditing Services Agreement by and between the City of Elmhurst and Sickage, LLP.
Thank you, Clerk Tamer. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove either for further discussion or to vote against? Alderman Schenkel.
7.17.
7.17. Alderman Erby.
Thank you, Mayor. 7.17.
Hmm. I guess we'll remove it twice.
I'm sorry, 7.15.
Oh, all right.
Misspoke.
All right. Anyone else? All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, less items 715 and 717. Alderman Cahill with a motion. Alderman Schenkel with a second. Clerk Tamer, please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Deuter.
Aye.
Veremis absent. Hill.
Aye.
Schenkel.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Udara.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Erdini.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. The consent agenda is adopted minus items 715 and 717. Clerk Tamer, please read the ordinance on 715.
An ordinance amending sections 51.53 entitled Possession of Cannabis Prohibited of Chapter 51 entitled Offenses Against Public Peace, Safety, and Morals of the Municipal Code of Ordinances of the City of Elmhurst, Illinois.
May I have a motion to put 715 before the council? Alderman Brennan, second. Alderman Hill. Alderman Brennan.
I'll defer to the alderman that pulled the ordinance.
Alderman Erby.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chair Alderman Brennan. I am an advocate for safeguarding the minors under 21 from being able to buy, possess, and use THC marijuana as codified under the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act effective June 25th, 2019. That was over four years ago. About the same time as the act was passed, some American Academy of Pediatrics on-the-ground medical doctors began reporting incidents to the Poison Control Center. First signs of negative events among young adults related to Delta-8 surfaced. Subsequently, two short studies have come out. The papers have been mixed review and confusing. The good news is, as of October the 10th of this year, 27 days ago, the American Academy of Pediatrics released a press release that the study named, quote, "Delta-8 disaster", semicolon, "exploring the market for synthetic cannabinoid Delta-8 and its availability to minors online." It will be presented October 20th through the 24th in Washington, DC by the American Academy of Pediatrics. You may ask, what about Delta-9? I mentioned Delta-8. Delta-9 is just THC. Pure and simple. It's already federally and state mandated since 2019 in the state of Illinois. Delta-8 is the exact same molecules as THC. They were just bound together differently from a chemical standpoint, or a covalence. I'm not a chemist. Delta-8 is among these 130 derivatives of the cannabinoid that are legislated under the current law. But the problem is, Delta-8 is being sold to kids, both online predominantly and secondarily to brick-and-mortar stores. My key takeaway is from reading the report from the American Academy of Pediatricians is young people are more likely to try the substance when it comes in a colorful packaging. Number two, Delta-8 distributors appear to be competing with each other to produce packaging that will attract the attention of the adolescents. Number three, cheap prices, and the variety of ways Delta-8 can be consumed make an attractive alternative to going and buying the more expensive THC. And of course, they can buy it currently as a minor, under 21. So those are the problems. In the final, despite safety claims, Delta-8 can contain toxic byproducts and intermediates. So it's, it's got some issues. So why are we here today? Why am I talking about this tonight? We have an ordinance 51.53, possession of cannabis prohibited. It legislates on two fronts. One, possession under sections B, C, D, and E, and it legislates under use under sections F, G, H, through L, as in Lima. And the fine is $500 minimum, and the state fine on the record is 75 in the act. So what we're doing is we're attempting to update the definition of cannabis, which I'm all well and good for. That's a good thing. The problem is, we have to have the back end to where we're legislate, I mean, have laws or ordinances that can be followed. And so right now, the law, as it is our ordinance, has references to code that don't exist. It has references to the wrong age. Instead of 21, it's 18. So there's some cleanup in the code, and so, at this point, if we're going to try to get done what we're trying to do here tonight, we need to get the code properly up to date in the ordinance. As it stands right now, and as we're presented tonight, I don't feel it's there, and therefore, I'd like to see that changed. So I am therefore respectfully making a motion to table this ordinance for two weeks, send it back to the city attorney to get it modified, and I'd like to come back in two weeks and vote yes. Thank you.
So a motion to table. Needs a second. All right. Motion dies for lack of second. But thank you. Any additional comment? All right. Clerk Tamer, if you would call the, sorry, Alderman Bram.
Thank you. I was going to do a point of order, but I had to wait for the motion. I guess my point of order would be, I understand Alderman Erby's concerns. Is there anything that we need to do from a cleanup perspective, from the city attorney's perspective, on this current ordinance? References to, possibly, as Alderman Erby said, incorrect references throughout this current ordinance? And can we just take this as scriven areas and move forward?
I haven't had a chance to talk to Alderman Erby at all about any of that. So I'm not, you know, I'm not in a position, I don't think we have, but I'm certainly pleased to talk to him and find out what, if anything, needs further cleanup. We did spend a good deal of time on this in committee. My preference would be to go forward with this ordinance as it's stated, and if there is some, if there is any further cleanup that needs to be done, we'll do it.
Alderman Bastido.
So apologies. I thought I understood what the changes we were making were, but now I'm worried I might be a little confused. Is there any way the chair, can I put him on the spot to just summarize what changes are being made here?
Let me put him on the spot. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. So basically, it was brought before the committee that this Delta-8 product was on the shelves in, you know, convenience stores, et cetera, et cetera. And through a lot of loopholes, they figured out, hey, you know what? There's no restriction on who we can sell this to by age, et cetera. And so with that, given the fact that, you know, the target audience predominantly is, you know, you could be 12 and go into a store and walk out with a bag of Delta-8 product. And as a result, we felt it was appropriate to create an ordinance that would limit the sale of this product, you know, to anyone less than 21. And so, is unanimously passed, and that's really the spirit of, hey, there's no regulation. It's nobody's fault. I mean, everybody was following the rules, but we have the ability to have an ordinance that restricts the selling of this to minors.
Thank you.
I just want to add, this ordinance that we are adopting, although we didn't start from somebody else's legislation through, I'll tell you through talking to City Attorney Storino and through DuPage Managers and Mayor's Conference, this is an ordinance that a lot of municipalities are adopting to address the situation. Additional discussion? Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if it needs to be said, but looking at the report and the ordinance, I'm just unaware what the discontinuity is here. I do see the same ages referred to in 51.53, the code, as well as the ordinance as, well, it doesn't state in the ordinance, it refers to the code, but it does state the same age restriction in the report. So at this point, I don't believe it's necessary for discussion anymore, as it, it was not supported to pull it from the, or amended or pulled from the table, excuse me.
Well, we, unless, I assume it will be voted on, and if it passes, then I will ask City Attorney Storino to follow up with Alderman Erby and see if there's anything that he, City Attorney believes we need to bring back to the council for correction. All right.
I have one other comment that I failed to, oh.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So additionally, knowing that we want to fast-track this and make this, you know, ordinance, you know, in our community, you know, make it happen quickly, we felt, you know, being business-friendly, we wanted to give the merchants or the businesses that were potentially selling this product a heads-up in advance of this meeting, actually in advance of the, when the report was, was approved here before the council. And that way, it just gives them, you know, we want to communicate with the merchants in our town that are selling this. They're very aware that this is potentially going to pass this evening. I forget the effective date on this.
It's effective now.
Effective?
It is.
Yeah, okay.
So we gave them notice that it was coming.
We gave them notice so we could put it in effect after we vote today. So I just want to give that additional information. We want to be fair to merchants that have legally purchased this, that they know there are new rules that are coming down, that they'll be required to abide by.
Thank you, Alderman Brennan. Anyone else? All right. Clerk Tamer, if you would call the roll on 7.15.
Deuter.
Aye.
Veremis absent. Hill.
Aye.
Schenkel.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Udara.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Nardini.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
No.
Twelve ayes, one nay, one absent.
Twelve ayes, one nay, one absent. 715 is adopted. Clerk Tamer, would you read 7.17, please?
An ordinance excluding the City of Elmhurst as a municipal employer from coverage under the Paid Leave for All Workers Act and amending the city code to require a form of paid leave for city employees.
I believe that came out of PAs motion to approve. Alderman Brennan, second. Alderman Hill. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. So one of our last council meetings, we approved a report that, and before us is the ordinance that supported that report. The ordinance is to opt out of the Paid Leave for All Workers Act. In January 2023, Illinois state legislation passed the Paid Leave for All Workers Act. And as we discussed this at committee, the parameters within the Workers Act at the state level, our full-time employees get more, you know, vacation than the policy calls out in the act itself. Additionally, as we reviewed the part-time, you know, policy, although it's slightly less than what the act mandates, the city is evaluating, you know, its current part-time policy. So because of this, the committee felt it was prudent, you know, to act, to actually opt out, given our home rule authority, and given the fact that our full-time employees, you know, actually benefit from our current policy at a greater level than the state's act, we are, this ordinance opts us out of that. The act itself takes effect January 2024, so therefore, we have to act prior to that in order to formally opt out of it. So with that, I'll turn it back to the chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Alderman Schenkel.
Yeah. So I pulled this from the consent agenda because I would like to propose that we amend the ordinance. Everyone has some language in front of them, and I just want to amend the ordinance to add information regarding part-time city employees. This is to clarify that part-time city employees in Elmhurst do qualify for some paid time off, as previously presented in the committee report on October 2nd, and that this will apply to all city staff based on defined personnel policies, because that's not stated in the report. So I would like to add the 3.24 section to clarify that we do provide part-time employees with time off.
All right. May I have a second? Alderman Brennan, a second. All right. So you have before you, everyone, we produced this before, the language that exists right now is section three in reference to a new 323. Alderman Schenkel's motion is to add the highlighted portion, 3.24, paid leave required for part-time employees. Discussion on the amendment. Alderman Brennan, and then Alderman Bram.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So Alderwoman Senko and I met before this meeting, and I do support the amendment that she, obviously, I did the second on it, but just first, you know, other aldermen, I am supportive of this revision. Thank you.
Alderman Bram.
Yes, thank you. I was just going to ask the city attorney, is this more belts and suspenders?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Which is very fashionable these days. Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. If I understand this correctly, this is not changing the way that we do things now. This is just making reference to part-time employees in this particular section, but it's not a change to what we do now. Is that correct?
And in fact, 3.23 itself was a belt and suspenders provision that the city attorney put in so that if, for some reason, the act was deemed not to be applicable to home rule, this would apply and let, you know, it's a statement of the city council that this is, we provide no less than five days. 324 basically says, part-time employees are covered by this, and they will get whatever benefits that is in the personnel manual. So it's not setting an exact policy. Alderman Toledo. I'm sorry, Alderman Deuter, were you done?
Yeah.
All right. Alderman Toledo.
Yeah. My concern is with the wording of shall. I, the way that I interpret this, and, you know, Alderman Brennan, if you can explain, or the city attorney, you know, the way that I read this, this is now in an ordinance. Alderman Schenkel stated that she wanted to just clarify that it was provided because it wasn't mentioned in the report. This is actually changing our ordinance.
This is actually changing our ordinance to require that we provide part-time employees with some form of paid leave. And that worries me from a financial perspective, that it ties our hands in the future, you know, depending on economic circumstances or whatnot. Can you, can the chair address that, please?
You want to?
I'll try. I mean, you know, I thought the same thing, and I think it really, you know, when you read it all the way through, it really defers to our policy that the city has and the personnel, you know, guide. So if we were to choose not to grant, you know, vacation to part-time employees, that would be updated in our policy. And like I said, the city is looking at our current policy for part-time employees at this stage. So I think we have the flexibility. I understand your concern, but I don't think we're guaranteeing anything in three point two four.
Well, we may be saying, we are saying they shall be paid, but pursuant to our policy. And we, I was involved in the discussion, the policy could be paid, it could be that you earn one half-day for every twenty years of service. So it's not really locking us into anything. We currently have a policy that provides not as much as the state would direct, but, you know, substantial time off for part-time employees. If the council ever decided that we want to go to zero, we could always amend this ordinance and take it out. I'm not, that's, I think, an objective explanation. A further comment, Alderman Toledo?
No, I'm thinking.
All right, very good. That's what we're here for. Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarity, in case anybody doesn't have it in front of them or has questions about what sort of part-time leave we offer, it was specified in the report, what the handbook details that we passed earlier. The part-time employee paid leave current offerings were specified there.
Thank you. Alderman Erby?
Thank you, Mayor. The way the ordinance is written tonight, we have a couple of wheresses in there that go destructively against a collective bargaining agreement, and in the code, the expressly says the collective bargaining agreements ride or deferred, they ride higher than the state code or any home law or home rule. That was the fear in the report, that the police officers and the firemen would all take off on a day, and we would have less public service. They're covered under a collective bargaining agreement, and I feel that statement in the report, or the ordinance tonight, is not reflective of the law at all. The second piece that I have a conflict with is the home rule status is not in the state code. And why we're using state or home rule, I'm not quite sure, but that Section P has a notwithstanding comma in it, and it's quite expressive that it says, "We cannot do home rule override to make a law less prescriptive than the state law." I'm not an attorney, but those are my two issues for deliberation. Thank you.
And where is Section P, just so I can?
That's in the wheress where we're talking about the--
Illinois Act. Not our ordinance.
Our home rule status, where we're--
PLAW? Is that what you're referring to, the public leave for all workers? Is that the P?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
There's a section in there where we're waving a home rule flag, and my point is, I don't think there is a home rule flag to wave.
All right, so we are a home rule community, and under the Constitution, we have certain powers that non-home rule communities don't have. So like when we pass a local sales tax, if you're not home rule, unless the state gave you that authority, you can't do it. So unless the statute specifically says that it is overriding home rule, then we retain that authority. On this particular statute, the PLAW, it does not say, you know, that it's not overriding home rule, so we may exercise that authority. To the extent we have collecting bart, collective bargain agreements, those are contracts that we have with our three, any one of our three unions, and those would, you know, they're not in conflict with our ordinances, but they're binding agreements. So I'm not, so we're covered. There's a state act that says paid leave for all workers, this is what you'll do. We're saying we're, the key takeaway on this ordinance is we're exempting ourselves from coverage under that state statute. Time's up? All right. And we are then talking about, you know, again, belt and suspenders, what we're doing for our full-time and part-time employees, which is ancillary to the main topic here. But, and City Attorney, do you see any conflict that I'm not?
No. The reason three point two three is in there is because in the last ten days, the Illinois Department of Labor rendered an opinion that home rule communities could not preempt. And so it was beneficial, and most communities are doing, I think, almost all that I'm aware of, certainly all that we're involved with, are all passing ordinances to make it clear that we have a policy with respect to employees and so that we can opt ourselves out and we can be exempted from the statute that you refer to. That's all that three point two three and three point two four are seeking to do.
And I will add that it's, we're not bound by the Illinois Department of Labor--
Correct.
--you know, opinion, and it goes in contrast to opinions by many municipal attorneys besides our own and the Illinois Municipal League, so we have a stew made of confusion of differing opinions. We're going with, if we're overruled at some point, and they say, if someone goes to court and says that for some reason we are subject to this and that home rule doesn't apply, then we will have to deal with it at that time. So other discussion? Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I think--
And by the way, we're still on the amendment generally. All right.
So with regards to this, I would just hope that we're still talking about the amendment. If I can say this, that concerns like these are brought to a committee in advance of the ordinance, such concerns as these might be brought when the report is being discussed at a committee, because I feel that this could have been addressed at an earlier time, this concern.
Acknowledged. All right, we're on the amendment. Any other discussion on the amendment to add three point two four to the ordinance? All right. So we're now voting on the amendment. So we're voting, an aye vote means we're going to add three two four, and aye means we're not. And then we will get to the main ordinance. Clerk Tamer?
Deuter?
Aye.
Veremis absent Hill?
Aye.
Schenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Udara?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. The amendment is adopted. Now on to the ordinance itself. Further discussion on three point one seven. Very funny. All right. Actually, it's seven point one seven, just to make it clear. All right. No additional discussion? All right. Clerk Tamer?
Deuter?
Aye.
Veremis absent Hill?
Aye.
Schenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Udara?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. Seven point one seven is adopted as amended. Item eight, reports and recommendations of appointed elected officials. Mayor eleven. Well, we seem to have a plethora of state championships, and we have yet one more, the York Girls Cross Country Team One State. And so--
Hey!
And I'm sure the city council will like for us to bring them before the council and congratulate them, but that's good news. I had the stories behind the songs. I second Alderman Hill's announcement. I will also say, our Veterans Day celebration is at Wilder Park on eleven eleven at ten thirty. Unfortunately, as much as I enjoy participating and/or attending at that event, I will be out of town, but it will be ably covered by our council veteran, Alderman Jacob Hill, who will be speaking in my stead. So please have all the other aldermen there to make sure that he's held to task. So that's Veterans Day at ten thirty. Assistant City Manager Cop? All right. Any other business to be brought before the council this evening?
We still have resolutions.
Oh, we have? 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 Oh, we have?